The hour of 6:00 PM on Monday, June 6th. I'll call to order the regular meeting and Planning Commission of the City of Series. Notice that this meeting will be held in accordance with California. Am I getting feedback? Okay. California Government Code Section 59453 subdivision E of the Ralph and Brown Act, California Government Code Section 54950 et cec, Series Resolution Number 2022-34, and the Federal Americans with Disability Act. While this meeting will be physically open to the public, given the state of emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19, members of the public may also participate and comment via the application Zoom. Remote public comment is also available for the Planning Commission meeting by emailing planning@ci.series.ca.us by 5:00 PM. The date of the meeting. Include the agenda number. I'm sorry. Include the agenda item number or public comment period in the subject line of the email. The clerk may read written comments into the record if specifically requested to do so at the beginning of your email. Will also be distributed to the Planning Commission and kept on file as part of the official record of the Planning Commission. All right, moving on. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Little clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, please note that Commissioner Del Nero is excused this evening. So we have Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Katchel, Commissioner Martinez, and Chairperson Smith.
Thank you. Are there any conflicts of interest to declare? All right. Moving on to Citizen Communications to the Commission on Matters Not Included on the Agenda. While the Planning Commission welcomes and encourages participation in Planning Commission meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Planning Commission. Citizens are entitled to address the Planning Commission on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on a matter not on the agenda? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak on any matter not on the agenda?
I see no hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Clerk, I believe we have received some public comments through email for item number three?
Yes, we have.
And those have been distributed to the commission?
Yes, they have.
Thank you. Any other comments received on items not on the agenda?
No, not at this time.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Does anyone on the commission have any questions on the consent calendar? All right, please note that in the approval of the minutes, item 2B, I was absent, so I will ask that there be two separate motions, one for item 1 and 2A, and then a separate motion for item 2B. This time I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion.
Item 1 and 2A.
Yes. A second.
I have a motion. Little clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Katchel.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Martinez.
Yes.
And Chairperson Smith.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0 with one absent.
All right, I'll entertain a moment for a motion for item 2B. I have a motion and a second. Little clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Martinez. Commissioner Johnson. And Commissioner Katchel.
Aye.
Motion passes 3-0 with one absent and one abstention.
Thank you. Am I the only one hearing the feedback? Okay, so we're just going to keep going. All right, this is the best we have. Okay, moving on. The no items were removed from the consent calendar, so we'll move to the public hearing. Item 3, a conditional use permit. 22-09, proposal for a conditional use permit entitlement to allow for a pallet storage yard to operate at 1651 East Whitmore Avenue. Efren Gonzalez is the applicant to have a staff report.
Thank you very much, man. Chair James Michaels with the plan of Mr. You put up page 31, the agenda. So this is the site plan that we have for this. So to give you some background here, the Plan Commission, as you are aware, the series flea market has been operating here at the site 1651 East Whitmore for decades. At the last time, the flea market management updated their existing conditional use permit was in May of 2013, when the management was looking to expand its days and hours of operation and include additional activities with the reopening of the drive-in theater and holding special events. Since that time, there's been a change in property ownership in 2018, and the new owner has been keeping the flea market operating, but that use has declined in vendors and customers over the past couple of years. Against me, the owner decided to pave the area to create a truck and trailer parking terminal in mid-2019 in the northwest and west end of the north end of the site while operating the flea market on a limited capacity at the south end of the property. Now, around May of 2020, the property owner began to use the middle part of the site to store some pallets without going through the city process. After receiving a complaint in January of this year, 2022, series code enforcement investigated the site and determined that the use had not been permitted and issued a notice of violation. Since then, this was followed up with the applicant contacting staff to discuss the possibility of operating a pallet storage yard at the site. Staff informed the applicant that the operation would require a approval of the conditional use permit, and that may be difficult to obtain approval of the use due to the aesthetic issues and potential fire hazards that typically come in the pallet business. The applicant acknowledged the concerns about the storage yard uses and submitted a conditional use permit to staff on April 18th this year. Enforcement activities since then have been on hold during the process, and city's fire department has inspected the site a few times to ensure that best practices are followed to reduce the potential fire hazards. So what the Plan Commission is considering tonight is whether or not to allow a pallet storage yard use to operate here at the flea market site. The applicant is proposing to use approximately two acres out of the 12.42 acre site, operating Monday through Friday from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM each day. Vehicle access service site by the way of two entrances, one from Whitmore, one the other from Hillmore Drive. It's expected that shipments for pallets would be coming in and out of the site would be about one truck per day. The applicant will be repairing and selling these pallets back to major wholesalers. The proposed use would be operating so as not to conflict with the existing truck terminal that you see up on the screen to the north and northwest area, and it would not conflict with the flea market that's basically now operating on the weekends. Okay. Do. Site number 33. Yeah. And so we've been working with the applicant, trying to come up with a site plan that can show the commission and the public and I what, you know, what they're proposing. So this has been routed to city's fire, police departments for review and comment, and there were some concerns about the fire hazard and its impacts that may result from this type of use again. Staff has prepared a list of conditions of approval for the, this proposal that the applicant will be required to adhere to in order to minimize any impacts that may result from this. These conditions can be viewed on pages 11 through 14 of the staff report. Some of those are generally about spacing measures and imposing stack height restrictions, such as pallet stacks not being taller than 10 feet. Might be appropriate spacing in between the 10 feet from property lines and that sort of thing. And with that, staff believes the use permit can be supported as applicant is willing to comply with these conditions that you see listed in the staff report. If the Plan Commission approves the proposal, the conditions for the project will run with the property. However, the city does have the right and the ability to revoke the CP if applicant does not comply with any of the approved conditions. The applicant is aware that city reserves right to review this use permit at any time, and that would be pretty much based on the amount of complaints that we might receive. So that concludes my part of the presentation.
Thank you. Just a couple more points to add. The reason that you, that we see the, these gaps between the pallet stacks, which are shown as green squares on the site plan, is that the fire code requires a 45-foot gap between those. We have Chief Wise with Fire Department here to answer any questions about the fire code. I know that the fire marshals, the office, has been out there to inspect the site multiple times throughout this process, and recently, the northern part of the property was repaved, and so pallets needed to be moved during, temporarily moved during that time for the repaving work to be completed. And we're here for any questions that you may have. Also note that in the staff report, it says that the pallet business began between August 2019 and May 2020. The reason we put those dates in there is that through this research for the, through researching this project and looking at Google Earth, we see aerial photos from history, and the last photo, aerial photo that showed no pallets was in August of 2019, and the following photo that had pallets is in May of 2020. So we know that during that is when the pallet storage business began. Thank you.
Thank you. Any of the commission have questions of staff?
Yeah, I guess I do. Before I get into the project itself, which I can wait after the presentation, our Sequoia, we're calling this exempt class one existing facilities, but this facility doesn't legally exist. I haven't done Sequoia in about a year. I used to do it every day, and I don't know how to make that determination. This is exempt under Sequoia. It's a brand-new project on law. This done though. Therefore, hey, it's a project, Sequoia, and you heard comments in the form of letters that there are at least two environmental issues here, aesthetics and fire protection. To me, this should be subject to a secret review. That's just my comment at this point. I have trouble going ahead with it. Unless our attorney can correct me then.
Thank you, Bob. Any other questions?
Excuse me. I don't know the exact date within the last couple of months. Yeah, so the first inspection identified several items on-site, lack of fire extinguishers, electrical issues, electrical heater in the work area where they built the pallets, different items like that. We did a subsequent inspection, came out, and everything that was listed, they had addressed and came in compliance with. Some of our concerns was the pallet storage and the arrangement of pallets. So we gave them that information of what the fire code allows for. So they were going to work on that, and our next inspection was to come out and inspect that. They started a pavement project where they needed to move the pallet to the side. While they were doing the pavement project, and after they completed the project, we were going to come back out and take a look at the pallet arrangement and storage. I don't have that information off the top of my head, fire code, but you definitely want to have one in the work area. You definitely want to have one on any type of equipment, forklifts or any other equipment that you have out there. We did find out that they were lacking training. We did go out and conduct training with eight of the employees with our simulated fire extinguisher box that we have. And we, they completed that training.
Excuse me. If you're, if this your comment period, we'll wait until we have the questions over. I appreciate that. Mr. Johnson?
Chief, if you had to rate this for fire hazard, 1 to 10, 10 being the highest, where would you rate this?
Pallet yards are always very high in fire rating. We've, in the last few years, we've had a couple of fires on 7th Street, I believe at the Perez Pallet Company that's in the industrial fire protection district. We've had some on 7th Street over by 7th and Hatch, right underneath the overpass over there. We had pallet fires, so they are common in our area. And it, you know, it's a Class A fire hazard, and you put wind to that, you put the elements of nature to that, and they can really grow really fast. That's why we go out and we try to get compliance on the location of the pallets and the storage of pallets and how they're arranged on the property.
Just correct me if I'm wrong. Once a fire like this starts, it's basically a take care of outside of it because it's an extinguish itself.
It is very difficult to fight pallet fire. There's a lot of variables, location, access, and a big one is water supply.
Thank you.
The water supply situation there. We haven't conducted the flow test out there. There are hydrants out there, but we haven't conducted.
Any other questions of staff? All right, thank you. Seeing none, I will now open the public meeting here. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item, please approach the podium and state your name for the record.
John Warren, City of Series. I live in District 1, north of Hatch Road, between Moffett and Central, very close to Virginia Park schools. Before I start, a quick, I want to make note. I had gone to the city planning department this morning, presented my statement that I was going to make to the city, and I had six pictures that I wanted to show the mission. And I sent them by email, and apparently only two went through. I don't know what happened to the other four, but they are from the freeway side. So if you're driving southbound on 99 freeway as you're approaching the cemetery or Whitmore, that area there that joins the railroad right-of-way where all those pallets are stacked up. I think you have a couple of pictures in front of you right now that show the height of those, okay? And they're obviously higher than the fence, and the fence that borders the railroad right-of-way there. So anyway, I have brought my pad with me, so I have the other picture available if commissioners want to take a look at them to make the final decision. The applicant has been operating without the city's permission for at least a couple of years now. Somewhere between August of 19 and May of 20, the operation started and has continued since that time. The staff report does note inspections of the property multiple times, but does not contain the violations that the fire department or the code enforcement personnel found during these inspections. It would assist this commission in its decisions if they were aware of all the violations found on the property and if any been corrected. Under the background area, it says the applicant contacted staff to discuss possibilities of operating a pallet storage yard after receiving a notice of violation. Under the site plan, it describes a repairing and selling operation back to wholesalers. These are two different things. Applicant starts with simply storing the pallets and then jumps into repairing and resale business, which brings other issues into the application process, like employees working on the property around these pile, sawdust, noise, and fire hazards. It also says the applicant will be utilizing two acres of the 12.4 acre site. How much of the property is actually being used now? Is it one and a half? Is it two? And going forward, are they going to use all 12 acres? I really feel there should be some requirement. How much of the property will be used and requirements that they not exceed that? The applicant has demonstrated his non-compliance attitudes regarding the conditions of the city over the past two-plus years and several months after being noted by not following the code enforcement and fire department requirements. For these reasons alone, the permit should not be granted. If the commission would entertain an application in the future, it should require the applicant to bring the property back into compliance by removing all of the pallets and starting his application without being in violation. The perimeter fence is in poor repair, and the pallets are stacked all along it, not with the required 10-foot setback. If you drive down that freeway, you see a continuous line of those pallets. There's no spacing between them, and they're very high. And of course, some of them are very low. But there is one continuous height and along the right-of-way. It's stacked under the billboard. It clearly says that they are not supposed to stack these pallets underneath that big billboard sign that's on the south end of the property. That's noted in the staff report. There should be at least a 12-foot masonry fence around this entire site for fire protection and the aesthetic impact of the city by the passing motorist. If the piles are to be allowed to be 10 feet, then the fencing and our wall should be taller, 12 feet, to block the view. And I understand the fire department allows us cases of piles to be 20 feet high. And if that's the case, then fence or whatever is going to obscure this from our public view should be higher than the piles are allowed. So if the fire department wants to allow 20 feet, then the wall or whatever should be 24 feet or whatever to hide this from the public and also to contain any fire. Pallets are not separated into groups as shown on page 33 of the staff report. If granted in the future, the applicant should schedule and pay for regular fire marshal code enforcement inspections. These should be at least quarterly and reported to staff and the city council at their regular meetings. City staff, code enforcement, and our fire department are already overburdened with monitoring activities within our city. Proving this permit would just add to the work they cannot seem to keep up with forward. I would encourage you two members to give serious thought regarding this matter. Applicants always seem to say they will conform, and later they do not. This applicant has already demonstrated how he will operate. It seems he does not plan to follow the rule even during application process. The timeline that we're dealing with here began about August of 2019 and between that and May 20th with the illegal operation. In January of this year, a complaint was filed with the city. In February, staff mailed a violation notice requiring the pallets to be removed by about March 9th. And approximately on March the 9th, the fire marshal inspected and found multiple violations of state law and Cal OSH regulations. On April the 18th, a conditional use permit application was filed, and the enforcement action was put on hold. And of course, tonight, June the 6th, the public hearing regarding the permit. The applicant is still operating in violation of the regulations and enforcement even while it is on hold. The pallets are still there in violation and they're an eyesore to the aesthetic of our community. Law enforcement and code enforcement is not something that should ever be placed on hold or just enforced several days per week with Monday through Friday and having Saturdays and Sundays off. Operations such as this are unfair to the other businesses that are operating within the guidelines required by this community. I thank you for listening to my views. Please give this thoughts of serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak on this matter? All right, I see a hand on Zoom. Is there anyone on Zoom that'd like to speak on this?
Yes, I see Rene Ledbetter's hand raised. Let me mute her. Go ahead, Mrs. Ledbetter.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I did submit a letter. I wasn't going to make, make it to the Planning Commission meeting tonight, but I did want to hear what I had submitted to the Planning Commission. I, I'm writing this email against, against the request for a conditional use permit for a pallet company at 1651 East Whitmore Avenue at the Series Drive-In site. It is my opinion that the City of Series should really consider how unsightly a pallet company will be to our community, not to mention the fire hazards it represents. This location is highly visible to drivers along Highway 99. This is not an image we as a city should want to portray, one of stacks of pallets and other junk that the owners may want to store. I know the city is working on the diverging diamond interchange at Service and 99, and as a result, the junkyards currently located there are slowly eliminating their inventory. It's great to drive over that overcrossing and see less and less junk as each month passes. It is time to elevate our standards for the Series community and not just accept any type of business that can't find a location elsewhere. Although the property is zoned for industrial use, we should be working with the owners to try and find a better use for this location. Let's not rid ourselves of one eyesore and replace it with another. That was an email that I had submitted to the Planning Commission. I wanted to jump on here because just about a week or so ago, on May 31st, there was an industrial section of Sacramento that, where a large pallet fire took place. And so this was just, you know, within a week ago or 10 days ago. And even though they call it a, they called it a two-alarm blaze, it took 10 fire engines, five trucks, and other firefighting resources to be dispatched and to fight that fire. Along 99, it is, it creates a high opportunity for winds, and I just believe that that is just, you know, it's a bad combination. Where it's located, the, the winds that come through 99 and come across, if a fire was to start there, and not to say it would be, you know, it would be the fault of the owners, but we're seeing more and more, not just in, you know, our community, but across the country, where people are causing arson. And, you know, it just takes one person to start a fire there, have it jump the freeway, and then hit other areas that could be impacted, like the homes across the freeway. So I just, I really hope that the Planning Commission does not approve this. We don't need another ugly eyesore at this location when we're getting ready to clean up another one. And I, I just, you know, I wanted to share this information with you because I think it's very important for our community that just because a business like this can go there, I don't think it should, and that's just my personal opinion. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mrs. Ledbetter. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this, sir? I noticed you came to the podium.
Hi, my name is Jim Shade, and the architect on this project, helping them to get this design so that the city is, county, city staff and so forth is acceptable. And we've, as you can see on the plan, which you don't have up here, that was submitted, that the pallets are distributed very nicely and 20 feet apart and only 10 feet high. They're 20 feet, or at least 10 feet from the property line, which is probably in the which is probably another 40 or 50 feet before you get to the freeways. So I think what has been presented is a very acceptable solution. Certainly would not be the fire hazard that has been in the past. They were all stacked together. But this being stacked 20 feet apart and probably not more than five foot square, 10 feet high. And so to me, this looks like a very acceptable use of that space. And if there's any questions, I'll be trying to answer that.
Anyone have any questions of the applicant's representative? Thank you, sir.
I have a question. You said the pallets were 10 feet back from the property line?
I think he was referring to the representation.
Okay.
Not the... All right, Mr. Warren, you've spoken super brief.
I wanted to comment about railroad. Having worked in the Slida area and all up and down Highway 99 with the freight trains that go through there consistently every year because of broken wheels and things on the freight trains, they catch the grass on fire. The junkyard or wrecking yard up in the Slida area burned down several different times because of the fires that were started accidentally by just the railroad trains going through the area. And this area is a prime candidate for that happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who hasn't spoken yet who'd like to speak on this matter?
Jeanie Akeley, Series. When these kind of items come up for discussion or passing, I noticed the one gentleman said he had been there. Is there ever occasions like this that's happening tonight or other events where people have to make a decision that the whole commission has went in a group to see what's going on themselves?
So I'm going to allow the city attorney to respond to that. Having field trips of the entire commission poses some concern, I believe. Nubia, are you on the line?
I am. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Yes, there's some logistical issues with conducting field trip-type meetings. It's not impossible. It's just logistical difficult. So again, it's not required, and it's really up to the commission on consulting with staff to ensure that they've been provided the sufficient information they need to make that consideration. But yes, it is technically allowed under certain conditions. It is difficult to actually hold a meeting because you have to provide public comment, allow the public to also attend, and that creates problems with commenting back and forth.
The public would attend the viewing that the commission would be at at the same time?
Yes, they'd have, yes, that is correct. If you have a majority, if you have a quorum of the planning commission attending any type of field trip, I guess, type of scenario, you'd have to provide an opportunity for the public to be there, be present. It'd have to be agendized. They'd have to provide a public comment portion as well. So again, that's why it poses some logistical issues.
I think that's a good idea, really, if it ever happens. As far as the commission, would it be possible for the City of Series to commandeer a vehicle to take them to certain locations?
If I can, sir. I can tell you that as independent and individual commissioners, we have every opportunity prior to the meeting to go to the site that's being discussed and observe on our own independently, whatever the issue or questions that are. And I know myself, I have done that. And I know my fellow commissioners, both current and previous, have done that.
You know, people have jobs and everything. I just thought, you know, at one point, you know, I don't know what people's times factors are for doing things for their own family. Maybe they could get together and meet together at the same time and then exchange thoughts or ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Sir, you've already spoken, but I'll give you a brief moment.
Hey, that's just staff note. Didn't have the fire department, police department all go out there and review the situation. We're trying our very best to make this very respectable stacking of pallets and not a fire. So that has been taken into care very carefully with your staff. Staff has been very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else in the audience that has not spoken that'd like to speak on this matter? Anyone else on Zoom?
I see no hands raised at this time.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing. Before I bring it back to the commission for discussion, I'd just like the record to note that we also did receive an email from Kelly Cerny, also expressing similar views to Mr. Warren and Ms. Ledbetter in her opposition to this item. All right, so we'll start here. Of course, I'm starting on my right.
You have a lot of thoughts on this. I'm still hung up on the CEQA issue. I don't, I could vote for a resolution. It says it's exempt, if it is. Beyond that, use itself, legal uses are, and this is an illegal at present, are always a problem when they get to a commission because you're kind of stuck with, well, how would we review this if it didn't exist at all? Sort of the way you're supposed to look at it, it's supposed to be there, but it is there. Track record is, we can see from the photos, which the two photos which the gentleman did submit, and we have, oh, that it's not being operated currently as proposed. I'm not sure why they haven't made that adjustment since they were not part of the problem. But you have that kind of a track record. I think it's also worth noting that, and Ledbetter commented, it's the first time in my mission that she has come here owes something or stated opposition to a project because she is very much pro-Series and pro-growth, Series and pro-economic development has a track record along those lines. And so I take it very seriously when someone like that with that kind of track record says, wait a minute, you need to look at this. And then the, just looking at it, pointed out by first gentleman that spoke in his photos, is certainly not much to look at. We've all seen it come into town from the north. If you come in town, you can't help but see it. And I wasn't aware it was not permitted under the zone. Not sure when it started out there either. It just sort of showed there. I have a real problem with, I think they're making a good faith effort. And it's quite possible that it could operate as Shade indicated in his presentation, that the plot plan, which shows that different stacks of the pallets and the spaces in between. And the fire department has had an opportunity to look at that. They've gone out there. When they first went out there, apparently they get, so here's some issues. Issues apparently were addressed. Anybody's too crazy about the idea of a use like this from a fire perspective, in any case. Heard from, I think it was Renee, that said that we had, Sacramento had a fire, similar situation. So I'm just really hesitant to head with this.
Thank you.
And I could maybe be convinced, but that's where I stand right now.
Thank you. I wonder if, at this point, before I move on to the other commissioners, if the city attorney might address Bob's, Mr. Ketchel's concerns about the CEQA item on the agenda, I mean, on the staff report, which states that it is exempt.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Staff did prepare the staff report, and they may have had something different in mind. But generally speaking, for this type of exemption, the main point of evaluation is whether or not the project involves some type of negligible or no expansion of use. And so based off of what's been described and presented in the staff report in the sense that the site is using, I suppose, best way to describe it is facilities or structures that have been in existence for a while. The expanded use is negligible pursuant to the exemption. So that's why. So the way that the exemption is drafted is a little broader than maybe the title seems to indicate. But again, I'll defer to staff if they have any additional thoughts on that particular exemption.
So if I can just make sure I understand, you're saying that it can be classified as categorically exempt based on its existence over the last several years?
Yes.
So, and I have a follow-up question to that. So its existence, whether it be legal or illegal, is irrelevant in terms of it being exempt?
The exemption is predicated off of the use that has existed. So in this case, we're speaking about a site that has structural improvements that have served the flea market use in the past. And so that's really what it's predicated off of. Again, it's the, I guess, the existence of whether this particular use is, not necessarily permitted, but that's been authorized or not, doesn't square away with the CEQA evaluation. It would be a different evaluation. That really goes to the planning commission and the public's potential concern with whether or not it's, they've been operating with authorization or not. So it's two separate things.
I got it. Okay, thank you. Mr. Martinez, do you have any comments or? Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
I think everybody's brought a whole lot of points to attention, and I...
Thank you. I agree. Mr. Ketchel, you did a great job of outlining the issues, identifying the concerns, which I agree with. Mrs. Ledbetter did a great job as well. And I agree with you. She is normally very supportive of businesses that come to the community. But this particular business has the potential, and it appears that it already is, creating a vision of blight from the freeway. And we have been working very hard. And sometimes we're struggling and not doing as well as we could to create a more appealing, visually appealing, community. And so I believe this is, creates a vision of blight. I also think there's a public health and safety issue associated with the potential for fire. And I was going to cite the CEQA issue, but I think Nubia has addressed that. And so I will not be supporting this item either. So unless there's any other comments, I'll ask the commission if I have a motion.
Go ahead, Bob. You got this one nailed down?
I can't remember the last time I made a, to deny something. Just looking for the format to make sure I put it in the right format. I guess I would just state then, and correct me if I'm wrong. Based on the record, the correspondence we've had, the public hearing we've held, discussion we've had, and particularly things Chairperson Smith just summarized. I can't support the project as it's configured on its history and therefore recommend the denial of the project.
And I would just want to make sure that that motion is sufficient for the denial. All right, so I have a motion to deny this recommendation. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Ketchel.
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Martinez. And Chairperson Smith. Motion passes 4-0 with one absence.
Thank you. I lost my agenda. Moving on to new business, there's no new business, no public meetings, no unfinished business, no matters initiated by the commissioner staff. Moving on to reports, anyone on the commission have anything to report? Okay, neither do I. Does the city attorney have anything to report?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything from staff?
I want to thank you for all your feedback. Also, I want to introduce our new city engineer, Kevin Watt. He comes to us with extensive experience, education. He's got a very, he's got a lot of experience, and we're really happy to have him here.
And where are you coming to us from?
All over California.
All over? You must have been in the military. That's the military answer. I'm from nowhere, but everywhere. All right, thank you. Chief Wise, do you have anything? Mr. Sims?
I'm sure. Just a reminder, I sent an email out to all the commissioners. It's a flyer about concerts in the park. That's going to be taking place next week on June 14th. If you haven't received that email, check it. But I can forward it to you. It was from our recreation department. And it'll list, it's a flyer that lists all the bands who are going to be. And it's, so June 14th is our first one this year.
I've received it. Thank you so much. This time, then, I will adjourn the regular meeting and to the next scheduled meeting, which is on Monday, June 20th. Thank you so much.